So much more than just building a robot. This is really working together. This is teamwork. This is understanding the science, the technology, the electronics and the mathematics behind it. We spent one night all the way until midnight programming different modes on this robot. We've spent countless hours building and rebuilding and testing and understanding that even though we followed the instructions absolutely correctly, sometimes they weren't the correct way. And we had to modify things on our robot in order to make it work correctly. The students control the robot through a telephone, through an android. We program everything into the android and it understands that through the Servos?
Or the, I'm so sorry, the what? For the wheels, they use RC motors and for the arm, we use Servos. Which, the difference between Servos and RCs is RCs move 360 where just Servos move 180 degrees. So it makes it easier to move the arm when you don't have to control it exactly. Another thing about making friends with other teams is we bent our arms so much that it didn't work. We didn't have a part and our hardware to fix it. And the other team we helped had the part and we couldn't compete without the teamwork of us working together. And like going further on that point is on the night before the competition, all of us slept at the mentors' house. And we got together and did a little morning so it would be easier for us to get up in the morning at like 6:00 AM and get to the competition.
We certainly could not do this program if there was not for all of the support from the schools, from the faculty, from the parents, from everybody who has brought us snacks and supplies and waters and extra parts. Everybody understanding the hours and the dedication that it really takes into it. It's really a community effort and having this program in the first place, we are so very fortunate to be a part of this. We are also very, very lucky this year that we were able to have two honorary team members. Ms. Ava is in the second grade and Ms. Aubrey is hiding back there, but she's also in the second grade. And they have come and they have helped out at many of the meetings. They've stayed many late hours helping us build and create and get ideas together. So it's great to have even the younger support and then helping out with our team. If you get an opportunity, we'll leave our board here at the back of the room for you guys to take a look at the pictures of some of the things that we did this year. We had opportunities to participate in community events. Do you want to talk about them, Mina?
Yeah, we did at the rec center, they held an Easter egg hunt and we stayed there for our community service. We laid eggs and then later. We placed them. And then later, there was crafts and pizza and we, as the crafts went around, we asked people if they needed any help and handed it out to them. Then we had a park cleanup at, what park was that?
It was Karan Park.
Yeah, it was on Karan Park. We had a park cleanup and like a meetup for all of us where we cleaned the park because park is near most of our houses. And it's nice to see community working together to make things better. Shift over. This is Yuri, our robot, and its name is Yuri because an error is, oh, URI error is 14014. And that is our number, our team number. So that's how we came up, that's a little how we came up with the name for it. Yeah, we won the Think Award, second place, for having like ideas and like having a good engineering notebook, even though we didn't have a very good engineering notebook.
The Think Award is awarded to the teams that understand the complete concepts and the idea behind the STEM program. We were awarded it because we did understand the science, the technology, the electronics and the mathematics. We understood that it took community, we understood that you needed all of those things involved to make this work.
And to point out how important that was, we had, we had an incident where the entire notebook that they judge us on was not turned in. This was all on the strength of what the kids knew, what they could orally recite and what they could tell the judges. Everyone else had a notebook and we still came in second place.
Thank you for letting us show you our robot.
So again, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the coaches and all the students. It really, as I said before, it takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication. And it's just an amazing opportunity to learn not only those skills related to the STEM disciplines, but also again, how to work together as a team, how to problem solve, how to pick yourself back up when things aren't working so well. So it's much bigger than just the science, technology. And also I'd like to take this opportunity to indicate an award that the district received. It was actually at the First Robotics Competition at the high school level. And we actually received an award, an award for the district because we represent First Lego League Junior. We had one at United Oaks. We have our First Lego League at, or we have First Lego League Junior Hoover. We had First Lego League at United States. We have our junior high team and we also have our high school team. So that was a recognition for the district of really supporting First Robotics and moving those really important STEM disciplines forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I know the board really enjoys seeing some of the things and that's a nice, we love to learn about it. I've really enjoyed hearing about all these programs getting started up and it's nice to see it actually coming together. So that's fantastic. We'll go ahead now and move on to our next order of business, which is Edison Presentation with Dr. Kraus.
Okay. Where's Brad?
I put the switch outside.
What switch? Right here?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm here tonight and I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I'm going to present on Edison. If anybody knows me, they know this is my passion and it has been for the last 25 years of my career, career here. And we're entering a new phase, starting next year with our new building, so it's been very exciting. I wanted to start a little bit with just a brief history of what back then used to be called the MAX program. In 1989, it started off as one classroom at Hazel Park High School. And that then expanded to a high school room and a junior high room at the high school. The following year, it was decided that the junior high room would move to Beecher. And at that time, it was called Beecher MAX and High School MAX. And then 1998, we added an elementary classroom. If people remember Beecher, it was in the back where the old print shop used to be. The print shop, once it shut down, was renovated to create a classroom and a kitchen area. In 2002, Edison became available and the two, the program at the high school
So much more than just building a robot. This is really working together. This is teamwork. This is understanding the science, the technology, the electronics and the mathematics behind it. We spent one night all the way until midnight programming different modes on this robot. We've spent countless hours building and rebuilding and testing and understanding that even though we followed the instructions absolutely correctly, sometimes they weren't the correct way. And we had to modify things on our robot in order to make it work correctly. The students control the robot through a telephone, through an android. We program everything into the android and it understands that through the Servos? Or the, I'm so sorry, the what?
For the wheels, they use RC motors and for the arm, we use Servos. Which, the difference between Servos and RCs is RCs move 360 where just Servos move 180 degrees. So it makes it easier to move the arm when you don't have to control it exactly. Another thing about making friends with other teams is we had, we bent our, we bent our arms so much that it didn't work. We didn't have a part and our hardware to fix it. And the other team we helped had the part and we couldn't compete without the teamwork of us working together. And like going further on that point is on the night before the competition, all of us slept at the mentors' house and we got, we got together and did a little morning so it would be easier for us to get up in the morning at like 6:00 AM and get to the competition.
We certainly could not do this program if there was not for all of the support from the schools, from the faculty, from the parents, from everybody who has brought us snacks and supplies and waters and extra parts. Everybody understanding the hours and the dedication that it really takes into it. It's really a community effort and having this program in the first place, we are so very fortunate to be a part of this. We are also very, very lucky this year that we were able to have two honorary team members. Ms. Ava is in the second grade and Ms. Aubrey is hiding back there, but she's also in the second grade. And they have, they have come and they have helped out at many of the meetings. They've stayed many late hours helping us build and create and get ideas together. So it's, it's great to have even the younger support and in helping out with our team. If you get an opportunity, we'll leave our board here at the back of the room for you guys to take a look at the pictures of some of the things that we did this year. We had opportunities to participate in community events. Do you want to talk about them, Mina?
Yeah, we did, at the rec center, they held an Easter egg hunt and we stayed there for our community service. We laid eggs and then later. We placed them. And then later, there was crafts and pizza and we, as the crafts went around, we asked people if they needed any help and handed it out to them. Then we had a park cleanup at, what park was that?
It was Karan Park.
Yeah, it was on Karan Park. We had a park cleanup and like a meetup for all of us where we cleaned the park because park is near most of our houses. And it's nice to see community working together to make things better. Shift over. This is Yuri, our robot, and its name is Yuri because an error is, a URI error is 14014 and that is our number, our team number. So that's how we came up, that's a little how we came up with the name for it. Yeah, we won the Think Award, second place for having like ideas and like having a good engineering notebook, even though we didn't have a very good engineering notebook.
The Think Award is awarded to the teams that understand the complete concepts and the idea behind the STEM program. We were awarded it because we did understand the science, the technology, the electronics, the mathematics. We understood that it took community. We understood that he needed all of those things involved to make this work.
And to point out how important that was, we had, we had an incident where the entire notebook that they judged us on was not turned in. This was all on the strength of what the kids knew, what they could orally recite and what they could, what they could tell the judges. Everyone else had a notebook and we still came in second place.
Yay! Thank you for letting us show you our robot.
So again, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the coaches and all the students. It really, as I said before, it takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication. And it's just an amazing opportunity to learn not only those skills related to the STEM disciplines, but also again, how to work together as a team, how to problem solve, how to pick yourself back up when it's, things aren't working so well. So it's much bigger than just the science, technology. And also I'd like to take this opportunity to indicate an award that the district received. It was actually at the First Robotics Competition at the high school level. And we actually received award, an award for the district because we represent First Lego League Junior. We had one at United Oaks. We have our First Lego League at, or we have First Lego League Junior Hoover. We had First Lego League at United States. We have our junior high team and we also have our high school team. So that was a recognition for the district of really supporting First Robotics and moving those really important STEM disciplines forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I know the board really enjoys seeing some of the things and that's a nice, we love to learn about it. I've really enjoyed hearing about all these programs getting started up and it's nice to see it actually coming together. So that's fantastic. We'll go ahead now and move on to our next order of business, which is Edison Presentation with Dr. Kraus.
Okay. Where's Brad?
I pulled the switch offside.
What switch? Right here?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm here tonight and I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I'm going to present on Edison. If anybody knows me, they know this is my passion and it has been for the last 25 years of my career, career here. And we're entering a new phase, starting next year with our new building, so it's been very exciting. I wanted to start a little bit with just a brief history of what back then used to be called the MAX program. In 1989, it started off as one classroom at Hazel Park High School. And that then expanded to a high school room and a junior high room at the high school. The following year, it was decided that the junior high room would move to Beecher. And at that time, it was called Beecher MAX and High School MAX. And then 1998, we added an elementary classroom. If people remember Beecher, it was in the back where the old print shop used to be. The print shop, once it shut down, was renovated to create a classroom and a kitchen area. In 2002, Edison became available and the two, the program at the high school and the program at Beecher moved into Edison. And at that time, we also added a third high school room. And that remains the current configuration today. Two elementary rooms, three middle school rooms and three high school rooms. In 2018, the plans were finalized for the Edison MAX remodel in addition. And due to that, this year, we are temporarily located at Longfellow. And hopefully, everybody assures me in, for the 2019-20, 2020 school year, the new building will be completed or completed enough to move in. So we're really excited about that. Edison MAX is one of two day treatment therapeutic schools in the county. The other is Kingsley Montgomery, which is located in the north. And being the only two separate schools in the county, the county ISD decided they would look at all the various districts and divide those up for those in the north and those in the south. But even though we're in the south, we go as far west as South Lion and as far east as Hazel Park. And then we go all the way up to Bloomfield Hills and Avondale. Edison has our SOAR expectations, which is our PBIS behavior expectations, which is stay safe, be on task, act responsibly and have respect for everyone. The purpose of this program is for districts who have students who have exhausted all the resources in that district to have a place to be referred to that offers intense therapeutic and behavior support. We receive these referrals through a central coordination process at the ISD. When we get those students, there's a process that we follow for taking those students. We go out, we do observations, we have the students and parents into the program to tour the program and it's there, at that time, they can ask questions. The goal of the Edison program really is to foster positive growth in social, emotional behaviors. But at the same time, we're still, we still have to deliver instruction. And all of our students, most are on diploma track, receive instruction using the Hazel Park curriculum. These are the districts right now that we service. We're, actually this year, we're servicing even more than this because Kingsley Montgomery in the north has had difficulty getting teachers and so they've had to shut down some classrooms. And because of that, we've gotten many students from districts that they serve, such as Holly, Oxford, Pontiac. Hopefully next year, they will open up some rooms and those students can return to that center program and opening up more space for students who live closer. I already reviewed this. This is kind of our configuration now. One of the things that makes Edison so successful is that intense support. So in a classroom for students with emotional impairments, we can have a maximum of 10 students with one teacher, two paraprofessionals. In addition to that, we have six full-time social workers or psychologists that offer individual and group therapy. We, our therapists co-teach social skills three days a week with our classroom teachers. And that's in addition to receiving instruction in the core content areas. Next year, we're looking at adding two additional classrooms. We have, in the new building, we actually have capacity to add six. Right now, we're looking at our numbers and we, we feel we can open one room in the K-12 range and one room in post-high. Post-high will be unique in that we will be the only center program to offer a post-high option for students with emotional impairments. So we have a transition coordinator who's been working diligently with the ISD, with their transition coordinator, in developing what that program will look like since it's going to be the first of its kind. In addition to the teaching staff, we have right now 21 paraprofessionals. Next year, we have 25. I have to say, our paraprofessionals are the backbone of our program. We cannot do it without them. And I say that probably every day I come to work. In addition to that, we have a full-time transition coordinator who acts as the liaison between Edison and the resident district. So as our students are successful at Edison, that transition coordinator will be in contact with the resident district about returning that student back to their resident. We usually do that through a process that starts off part-time and as a student is successful, we will move them up to full-time status. We have an assessment coordinator who coordinates all of our state district and building assessments, as well as looks at interventions for tier two and tier three academic and behavior supports. We have adapted physical education four days a week right now and I believe our adapted PE teachers in the audience. In fact, I want to recognize two of my staff that are here. Ms. Rhonda Morris, who's one of my high school, is one of my high school teachers and Mr. Ricardo Castillo, our adapted PE teacher. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Katie Ballard, one of those paraprofessionals I was talking about. So this is going to be the new building or the artist rendering of it. If anybody's driven by lately, it's kind of like coming all together and so we're really In addition to the K-12, as I said, we're going to have the post-high. And what will be nice about that is it kind of has a separate entrance that you can see off to the right on the, on the picture. And what we've been looking at for our post-high option, because it's, it's something brand new, is really getting away from a school concept and looking at, looking at it as a career work center for young adults. We don't, we want to make these young adults feel as if they're coming to work to learn skills, not just coming to school to sit in a classroom. And so our transition coordinator has really worked hard in kind of formulating what that's going to look like. And so some of the vision that we see for that is that this will be more of a work-type environment. We're going to be looking at placing them in work sites as they learn those skills. We're going to be looking at maybe starting up a micro-business where they can make things and sell them. We're going to have them be the center of planning, so we will have students conduct meetings. We will also have, continue to have the mental health and behavior support, vocational life But really look at those employability skills. Different from JAR-DAN, we're looking at students who really need more intense behavioral support. So what's next? The new building's projected to be ready. As I said before, all the furnishings are on schedule so far to be delivered and set up in July. Our staff is packing again and we have been interviewing and actually have made several recommendations for hire for new positions. So we're really excited. If anybody has any questions? No, great, thank you.
Thank you.
That was really informational. Thank you so much. Is there a way we could get a copy of that presentation?
Absolutely. We will upload it into, on the website.
It has a lot of facts that I think would be really helpful to keep track of. And we're all really excited about the new Edison building. I know I haven't gotten a chance to, I hope that when it is ready, that I can get over there to get to see that. So we're, we're all excited about that. I hope the move goes smoothly, even though you're moving again.
It actually, it did the first time. And we do plan on getting open house and the board to first get a question.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Next item, uh, next order of business is the introduction of our new dining service director. So who's going to introduce?
I think Karen might be doing that for us.
All right.
Dining service?
Sam.
Terma, yes.
As you may have already heard, Samantha Masters, our Director of Dining Services, was offered a very lucrative and very exciting new position at another school district and we've had to say goodbye to her. But when one door closes, another opens. And I am very happy to present to you this lovely woman standing behind me. Her name is Marcia and she's here tonight to say a few words to you and kind of share a little bit of her background. And she's been on board for all of two weeks and she's going to tell all about the good stuff she's done in the last 10 days.
Marsha.
Rita, build it up. Hi, my name's Marcia Jevitt. I'm the new food service director and I come to Hazel Park School District with about 30 years of food service management experience. I would have to say about maybe seven years of that was in K-12 back in early 2000s. I've also worked a lot in higher education and in healthcare as well. So I'm just getting my feet wet again and I have a great support staff in the office with Sarah Bean and Jamie Nett. And I, you know, in the past two weeks, I've been refamiliarizing myself with the K-12 food service program and with the employees and trying to get out to, I've been to at least, I've been to all the schools at least once. And every day at lunch, I'm trying to get over to a different school district to be more familiar with the employees and the staff. And I'm trying to get around to meet all the principals as well, so I really have.
Thank you, Marcia. Welcome. We're really happy to have you aboard.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item is our assessment data presentation. So, yes, Ms. Dolmetsch is making her way over.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and talk about our data. You know, we have these data updates two to three times a year. And the data that I'm going to be talking about tonight is really reflecting what was done in February or March. It takes a little bit of time to get that data together, but I can assure you that there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of energy and a lot of conversation and action steps around moving the data forward. So I hope to accomplish three things tonight, briefly. The first would be to do a brief overview. As you know, there's a tremendous amount of data. There's a more lengthy presentation that will be shared with you at a later time, you know, uploaded, could be uploaded and we can really work through that. The second thing that I'd like to do is really talk about the important thing, which is what is our action? So we have a problem-solving process in the district and we use that, whether it's at a classroom level, a building level, a department level or the district level, we use that same process. And then we're going to kind of dig deeper into a building and I've invited Mrs. Nastasi, who so nicely agreed to come up and talk a little bit about the work that she does with her teachers in her building. And then we'll kind of close with a quick summary of, you know, some of the, the big findings and some conclusions and really some big next steps. So the first thing that I wanted to do was really kind of nest our work in something that we often talk about, which is a RIT score. So the first two slides are representing three years of longitudinal data, which is actually kind of exciting to say, because you know, once you get this much data, then you can really start to dig in and have conversations and think about what happened in the past, what you're doing now and what you need to do moving forward. So what this really represents is our three-year longitudinal data. This is demonstrating average RIT scores, which for many of you, I'm sure we've, you know, you've heard and talked about and know what that RIT score really means. It's, it's really the measurement that kids get when they take that test. And so basically what you see is, these are averages again. This is a snapshot in time of the average RIT score of all students in the school district in the winter testing. And so basically what you see represented here is the, the green bar is winter of 2017, the dark gray is winter of 2018, and the light blue is winter of 2019. And so basically what you can see, first of all, is our scores haven't gone significantly lower, significantly higher. It's relatively stable. Yes, you see little ups and downs in the graph, but basically when you look at those numbers and when you know, when you think about numbers, those are really small changes. But one of the positive things that we can point out is that in terms of our growth in 2018 and 2019, both of those years were higher than we were in 2017. And we think about the impact of, of the work that we're doing, that's an important thing to understand. I also like to say, always when we look at this, these are averages. And when you average something, it's just like anything else. You could have a lot of kids up here and you have a group down here that depending on, on, you know, the gap that they're having, could really change that score. So really kind of nest that and keep that in mind throughout the rest of the presentation. This same data can be seen for math. You know, basically pretty much that same pattern that we saw. We saw some, some ups in our lower elementary and then we see some up and down in our middle years and then our math is a little bit lower. We know math is an area that we really need to work on. We talk about that. We continually reflect on the data. We dig into our curriculum. We structure our professional learning around that. We know it's something that we really need to dig into and build in our, in our students. But what you'll see in the rest of the presentation are there some really kind of positive glimpses that you'll see at different buildings and grade levels where we're seeing spikes in math. So those are some really positive pieces of the data. This is a graph that we're used to seeing a lot. It's a very meaningful, easy-to-read graph. What this is, is district again. This is all students, all schools that administer this assessment, K-8. And so basically what this shows is the diamond represents the projected growth. So when the students take the assessment in the fall, there's a projected growth that they all received. And basically, this is representing the diamonds are the projected growth and the bar, the purple bar, is the observed growth. And again, you can see in grades one through four, we really met or exceeded, actually not even met, but exceeded, the expected growth for those students in the area of reading. We see in kindergarten, sixth and seventh grade, not quite, but that is not significant. Basically, they were missing, literally probably missing that by one or two children, you know, when you look at that data. And then we see a really positive thing, which is our eighth grade. That was significant growth in eighth grade. And that's been an area that we've really been working on and building on. And that was a really positive piece to see in our data. And the next one we see is for math. Once again, we see our lower elementary, our K-1, 2. And you, and you know, we say this every time, but I think it's important to note again, we have strong interventions in K-2. We have teachers administering tier two and tier three interventions or tier one and tier one core instruction and tier two interventions in their classroom. And we have MTSS teachers who are diligently working in both reading and math. So once again, we know there's impact in having all of that opportunity for our children. We would love to have more MTSS teachers and maybe someday, but we know that's really a significant impact. And you, and again, once, we see, you know, our, our math in the upper grades is a little bit lower, but when we look at that, that's not significantly off again. If there were significant gaps, what you would see is you would see a big space between the diamond, which is our projected growth, and that bar. That's not what we're seeing. I've looked at the data, obviously, over and over and over and that was, those were slight, probably again, three, four, five kids where it pushed it up, so it didn't look like we were meeting the projected growth. This is at a district level. So what I'm going to do now is a quick glimpse into buildings. I'm going to go through the slides pretty quickly, kind of point out some highlights. Again, we have a lot of data. We're digging through a lot of the data.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
How come the expectations for the higher grades are lower than the elementary?
Good question. So basically, you know, it's all based on a RIT score. And in the lower grades, the, the growth in the lower grades in terms of RIT scores is much more significant. For example, if you looked at the RIT scores, the expected growth in the fall of a kindergartner and then what they, the growth in the RIT number in the winter, it could be 10, 12, 15 RIT points. Whereas in the upper grades, what you notice is that it's a smaller span. So for example, maybe they need to be at a RIT score of 225 in the fall and then they need to be at a RIT score of 226 or 228. You know, there's not a lot of change. So that's why the bar looks a little bit lower. And those numbers are a little bit different in terms of the grades.
Okay.
I mean, simply put, kids are expected to have more growth when they're younger than when they're older. They don't, they don't grow as much.
Okay.
So like I said, I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. I think I'm coming up on my 15 minutes already. So to go through some slides, point out a few highlights, because I, I definitely want to give an opportunity for Mrs. Nastasi to come up and talk about actions, because that's the important piece. We are very clear and transparent about our data. We talk about it a lot, but it's the action that's really the meaningful piece. So this is basically the percent of students who met their growth projections by building. What we saw on the previous slide was the whole district. So you can see here, I'm going to point out some really positive pieces here in our increases in first grade and third grade and fifth grade. What's significant about third grade and fifth grade? If anybody's followed this and looked at our data, our third grade has been an area that we've really struggled with. Look at what we see here. That's a significant change in a grade level. Same thing for our fifth grade. Often our fifth grades were not meeting their growth goals. And now we see a really positive change in that for our Hoover students. Same thing that we see in United Oaks. Notice we have our second grade. Look at our third grade again. Those are really, really positive areas of growth that we should celebrate and be really excited about, as well as our fifth grade with the growth.
Ms. Dolmetsch?
Yes.
Can you explain some of the questions that we answer when we see some of those growths going below where we were in winter of 2018?
So this, again, these are averages. And you know, I think one of the things that's really important is, is yes, we have, so first of all, here's a really important point. I know we always want to talk about cohort data and we could start to look at the grades, but it's really, really important to understand that even if we look at that kindergarten bar, which is the dark blue bar in winter, winter of 2018 and then say, well, let's look at our first graders, it may not necessarily be the same kids. You know, You know, we have fluctuating enrollment, so we could look at that group of, that achieved at 86 percent, that's clearly a lot of kids meeting their goals, and say, well, gosh, look at what happened in first grade. It may not necessarily, there's going to be a core of kids that are the same, but not necessarily. And I think it's really important to go back to that average piece. So I just did, oh, good, Brad's going to work his magic while I talk. So I just, you know, just basically, if you look at numbers, so let's just say if we have a group of 48 students, and 15 of them meet their growth goals, that percentage is around 31 percent. If just three more students meet their growth goals, that pops up to 30 percent. So there can be fluctuations by two or three children in that data. That data is not what we want that data to be. So as Mrs. Nastasi is going to talk about, when we have an opportunity, when we see data like that, what we do is we get the data, we look at our AIMS Web data, we look at our MAP data, we look at any other data, classroom local data, and then what we do is we start to go through that problem-solving process, which she will explain, and put actions in place. So, can I explain why that percentage, you know, obviously, they were not where they needed to be? It could be just slight in terms of the number of kids, it could also be just slight in terms of the questions that they did or didn't answer. And what this is, is meeting their growth projections.
No, I think that answered the question. I just don't want anyone who's new to looking at one piece of data to see that numbers are quite low or higher in another way, with not understanding exactly what they're looking at. The data can be really complicated.
And then we're going to hop over here to web. Again, some really big areas of growth. And then there's areas, as pointed out, that we really need to focus on as well, that we do. You know, we have some fluctuations. What I'm seeing, though, the difference in this data, and it's, you wouldn't understand this or know this unless you saw some of the back data, and if it was up here, is that, in our upper grades, even though they're a little bit lower, we're seeing higher percentage of students achieve, even though some of those are a little bit lower. So, again, could be two or three kids, something we're digging into, something we're really addressing and trying to move forward on. And then we have our junior high here. A nice, you know, continuation we've maintained in our eighth grade. We went down a little bit in reading in terms of our sixth and seventh grade, but a really strong performance by our eighth grade students, which is a positive piece. This is a little bit different. I'm going to go through this really quickly, I just wanted to present this. So basically, what this is, is this is the percent of students that are at or above the norm RIT. That's important data, because it really helps us understand, in terms of national norms, how are we performing? So it's, what you saw before was, are students meeting their individual projections? What this is, is how are we working compared to national norms? So what you see here is there are some, you know, bright areas, like our first and second grade. We know that there are some areas in our upper grades and kindergarten that fewer percentage of students met that national norm. That's definitely something that we are looking at, and we are asking that very question. You know, when you look at this data, what might be happening? Why is that happening? What are your actions moving forward? And I quickly go through some of these slides, because I have some others. And then I'm going to hop into math, just do a quick dip into math as well. So now this is a math, disaggregated by school. We know math is an area. I said that earlier. We know it, we are working on it, we continually talk about that. At the very end, I'm going to talk, and I'm going to talk about some of the actions we've put in place to really address that area, and start to really move the needle and close those achievement gaps. One of the things that I did want to point out is that, although math is that area that we know we are struggling with, you'll see over the next couple of slides, that there are some really significant increases in terms of math, such as our first grade and our second grade in the United Oaks data. Moving forward onto web, we see, again, some nice increases in first grade, second grade, and fifth grade. And if you look at fifth grade, that was a huge increase in terms of the data. Again, fifth grade has been that area, third grade and fifth grade, where we've really had some more struggles. So that's a really positive piece for the work that's being done at web. And then we have our junior high as well. And this is moving on, again, once into our, once again into our at or above meeting the norm RIT. We know that our lower elementary, as we said before, we're going to see that bigger change, because we have that strong support in our lower elementary grades. And then we see a little of a significant dip in terms of the percentage of students that are meeting the at or above norm RIT in terms of math. Just going to go through these slides quickly, so you can get a little glimpse. So the next thing that I want to do is really kind of show you three quick slides, because we've talking, been talking a lot about our interventions and our MTSS teachers. We know there's significant impact. We have all of these graphs for every grade level. I really wanted to hone in on our kindergarten first and second grade, because you're seeing the impact of those MTSS teachers, along with our classroom teachers. Our classroom teachers have strong tier-one, they're billing that strong tier-one, and they also administer tier-two interventions in their classroom. So our students that are at risk, or our students with more significant learning gaps, have that double duty. It's not just what's going on in the classroom, or just what the MTSS teachers are doing, it's both. So if you look here, this kindergarten triangle is exactly what we want to see. The first one over here on the left, in the top left, shows where our students were in terms of these assessments in the fall, and then you see the transition to winter. So basically, what you see is, in the fall, we had 56 percent of our students in tier-three, which is the most at-risk, and then, really, a few short months, two, three months later, we changed that to only 34 percent. That's a significant amount of growth. Same thing with our tier-one. We went from 40, or 25 percent in our tier-one, which is that really strong work, into 47 percent. And across kindergarten first and second, you're going to see that same pattern. Little more so in literacy than math, but I'm going to show those graphs to you as well. Going to get a little glimpse into this. This is first grade. Nice significant growth in first grade, and here's our second grade growth. So once again, really the big impact of those interventions and having that strong opportunity to support students' double duty in their classroom, as well as with the MTSS teachers. Next thing I wanted to do was dip into PSAT and SAT. We don't do a lot with PSAT and SAT. Did you have a question, Rachel?
Yeah, I did, because I want to make sure, because I'm seeing some, like, glazed-over faces in the audience, and so I'm afraid that we may be losing some folks who are watching at home, too. And I wanted to go back to those graphs, and I want to explain what it means to have, if you're looking at the colored screen, someone moving from the red to the green, and how significant really that is.
Thank you for pointing that out, Rachel. I did not share what those colors meant. So basically, green is where we would really want our students to be. That's really, basically, at grade level, or where we would want them to be. That yellow band is really that, you know, in-between band, you're not quite into our tier-one, which is where we want all of our students to be, and that red is really that most significant at-risk student. And so, again, what you really want to see is basically like this first one, we want that big band of green, because that's talking about our strong tier-one performance. That's at-grade level, that's what we want our students to be. We want that shrinking yellow band, which is what you see in that upper left, and then a shrinking red band, or red top of the triangle, which is tier-three.
Thank you.
So, once again, dipping into PSAT and SAT, now this is important, this is fall. PSAT and SAT, this is not the state-level spring test that they all take. So this is fall data, but it does give us some good data for us to dig into. I'm really just going to talk about the percentages. There are some graphs in here that dig in a little bit more, that we won't have time to do right now, and they really kind of dig in and give some disaggregate data. But basically, I wanted to share this. This data is pretty consistent with what we've done in the spring. So when I looked at our performance in the fall, and compared it to what we did in the spring, this is pretty consistent. That first column, ERB stands for evidence-based reading and writing, and so that's really the reading and writing portion of that assessment. And then, of course, then we have our mat, math benchmark. And so, basically, with PSAT and SAT, you either meet the benchmark, or you don't meet the benchmark. Now there are, you're going to see some data on the following slides that talks about disaggregating in a little bit more, and that really gives schools the opportunity to dig in and understand where they really need to focus their work, and what the big impact is of really digging in and focusing work. So basically, you're seeing our eighth graders, or, well, this is our ninth graders, that 25 percent are meeting the benchmark, or met the benchmark in the fall, on evidence-based reading and writing. And then when we move up in the grades, we see that our 10th graders, 35 percent of them met that benchmark, and then our 11th graders, 41 percent. Those mirror our spring 2018 scores pretty closely. And then, as we see that discrepancy between our reading and writing and our math. And then that final column really represents students that met both benchmarks. And so that's a really high-level look at our PSAT and SAT. What's important about this data is, because we give this in the fall, it gives an opportunity for the school to dig into the data and say, what do we need to do? Where are areas of growth, and what can we do instructionally to really impact that? This data really, certainly, the screen is so small, I never expected anyone to really actually read that data. What I really wanted to show you was some of the tools that our administrators and teachers have to dig into this data. Because as you see, when you see that 35 percent or 40 percent, that really doesn't mean a whole lot. You really need to dig into the data and start to say, what are we doing well? Where are areas that are growth? And what are areas that we really need to hit hard? And so this is basically showing some disaggregate data. The data is disaggregated by a command of evidence, words in context, expression of ideas, which is clearly writing, and then standard English conventions, which is the writing piece as well. And we also have that data disaggregated by, in math. And really, the focus is the heart of algebra, problem-solving and data analysis, and then the passport to advanced math. So this gives an opportunity to see what we do when we get this data. And I really wanted to kind of really focus on that, and that's actually where we're going to transition to next, is really, now what do we do? So we have the data, what do we do? As I mentioned, we have a strong system in place called our problem-solving driver. It is used among teachers, it is used among grade levels, teacher teams, building network teams, which is our leadership team in our buildings, at the district network team, which is our district leadership team. And it's really the way we think about, process, analyze, and take action with our data. So the next slides, I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Nastasi. Mrs. Nastasi, she's going to go through quickly the next two or three slides, and then I'm going to finish up.
Okay. So as Mrs. Dolmetsch mentioned, one of the things we do with our data is really dig into that at grade level meetings. So in the elementary, we have the luxury of, teachers have come in prep times, and so we pull them together, and we usually dig into one set of data at a time. But we look at data from our NWA, from our AIMS Web, and from local assessments. And we then go through this problem-solving driver and kind of dig at where do we want to focus as a grade-level team. And then, monthly, we meet back on those goals and see where we're at. Do we need to change any actions? Do we, you know, how's it going? So this looks like some more triangles, are these ones?
Yeah, yeah, there.
Okay. So this is an example of some of the AIMS Web data that we get back, and this might be a jumping-off point that we would use. We happen to really dig into, I did a professional development session with my staff on the AIMS Web data specifically. So we really dug into, okay, where do we see an issue? And then we kept just diving in deeper. Math, in general, has been an issue for us at web, so that's something that we've been really focusing on. And so we're looking here at the early numeracy composite trends, looking at where we might be closing the gap, and where that gap might be getting bigger. So, at web, just this past February, one of the things we did with our AIMS Web data, our kindergarten team met. We identified, kind of looked at our NWA data to see that we were kind of struggling with math, then dug into some of our AIMS Web data, and really got down, we drilled down and saw that number naming fluency, with teen numbers specifically was an issue, the quantity total fluency, and the quantity difference fluency, and that's how quickly kids can add and subtract. And so we set ourselves some goals, and then we put together some, an action plan. And then, as you can see, in March, and then again in April, we met back to see what do we need to change, where do we need to improve, and what's going well. And so the teachers were each doing those things in their classrooms, and then meeting periodically, they were, they were checking in on the kids, assessing them regularly. In this situation, the kids were assessing and monitoring their own progress. And so, and a lot, while we do that, we kind of look at some of the causal theories that we think might have caused some of these discrepancies in scores. We did the same with our fourth grade, I just got a couple to model. Again, digging into our math data, that's kind of where we focused, since overall, that was one of our biggest struggles. The fourth grade decided to look at fluency triads, and so that requires estimation, that requires some number sense and different things. And so the teachers created some progress monitoring quizzes along the way, and we kind of kept, you can see one of those triads there, right in the middle, we kind of kept working with those to increase their skills, and talked about some of the things that would have caused those things to happen. And then, we're anxious to get our scores back, or take their assessing this week in AIMS Web, so we're really looking forward to meeting back together to see, did what we, you know, is what we did, our action plan, did it have impact on our scores? And we think that, especially in those two grades, that we really, really dug into that, that we will see some impact.
Mrs. Nastasi?
Yeah.
So when we're looking at these SMART goals, and we're in the classroom, and I'm a teacher, right? I always like to tie it back to where, how this data puts back.
Sure.
So, we're not only assessing the children, but we're also differentiating that instruction to be able to challenge the kids that need the challenging, and also being able to support the children. That's still going on in the classroom, correct?
Right. So, you know, we're lucky with some of the assessments that we're doing. You get big-picture views, and then you get some more drill-down views. So where we can actually take it to the student level, see where their strengths are, where their weaknesses, we can create strategy groups based on some of those, some of that more drilled-down data. So the teachers actually can create target groups as well. Kids that are struggling, kids that are doing well. It's funny how, you know, you'll see in math, you know, they'll have different strengths and different weaknesses, not always just all good at math. You know, sometimes geometry's their strength, sometimes it's number fluency, depending. So we're really digging down to see, and we meet them where they're at.
And this helps the teacher plan their lesson plans, correct?
Yeah. It actually dictates, you know, the work that they're doing, not just with their curricular units, but then also pulling back to see what may, what may some of the students have missed along the way. Let's say they already taught geometry, but they're still seeing that there are some issues with geometry. They may be going back during strategy groups and pull groups according to need. Yeah. It really helps us to dig down and get the kids exactly what it is that they need.
And this really helps the teacher feel autonomous in their role, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, because we do this together. This is a team, this is a team effort. We sit down together with the data. In fact, this, at this particular meeting, we had had a staff meeting the week prior, so we started kind of working in teams, and then we even kept going and digging deeper as we met in our grade-level teams. So yes, the teachers have, we all do it together, and they kind of take on what they think. You know, they try not to take on too big of a goal, you know, because they have their own curriculum that they're teaching and everything, so they really think, okay, this is something we can really dig into. Sometimes it's something that they're really interested in. Oftentimes, when we come back together, they'll be talking back and forth, like this was working, this wasn't, oh my gosh, I'm really seeing success with this. Most of the time, when they set these goals, they progress monitor along the way, so they're seeing who's coming along and who might not be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So, so basically, some of the big ideas, the findings and conclusions are, you know, overall, our students in grades K2 continue to outperform students in grades K3, or three through eight, certainly. That outperform is not where we want that to be either, but there's, they're outperforming, and we know that we're starting to shift and close that gap. The increases that I mentioned were noted in grades three and five for some schools were significant. It's a really important data point that we need to focus on. Yes, we want to focus on those areas that we need to improve and grow, certainly, but that's a really big data point that we need to look at. Students continue to perform better in reading than math across all grades, K12. The average RIT score, which we looked at first from 2018 to 2019, is relatively stable. There's been no significant decreases or increases in the past two years. And the average RIT score in most grade levels is higher when compared to winter 2017. So we know those big areas of focus, certainly, our math, the achievement in all grades, especially in grades six through eight. Our overall achievement levels in reading and math are below the norm RIT. That's, back to that norm RIT, we need to move that dial up, as we really compare ourselves and how our children are performing against the national norms. We know that there's an impact with the lack of support in terms of MTSS in grades three through five. And you, really, one of the other areas of focus is really digging in. You heard what goes on at the elementary billings, I can echo, I know Mrs. Gressley and Mrs. Demus are in the audience as well, and they do those very same things in their, in K-5 in their billings as well. We know that the use of the data and problem solving drivers specifically, we need to move a little bit more forward in our, in grades six through twelve, kind of wrapping around how that looks in terms of finding time to meet his grades, but we know that's a really critical piece. So what are our actions? Mrs. Mustowski talked a little bit about those actions at a building level. We do the same thing at a district level. So basically, one of the first things that we need to do is say, here's our winter data, here's what we put in place, what's the impact? And that's shortly going to start with building levels, looking at their data, as well as us at the district level, saying, what was the impact? What are we going to continue to do? What do we need to do differently? What are we going to do, move forward? And really, you know, more, basically the in-depth analysis and action steps using the problem solving driver, which is what we just talked about. There really needs to be an increased focus on using the problem solving driver to try and elate the data in grades six through twelve. We have specifically targeted, we know that third grade has been, although we saw some areas of growth, if you recall, I think at the last board meeting, Dr. Postel came to the board seeking approval for the summer camp, summer instructional camp. And basically, we've really targeted reading and writing with a really strong focus on our third grade's children. We're really trying to, again, continue that K-2 movement, start to really build those skills of our third graders, which is just going to have that trickle up effect in terms of grades four and, and five, and then on up into the junior high. Another thing that we use this data for is our curriculum revisions. Every year, we have a curriculum revision process. And, you know, along with that feedback from teachers, we're also saying, what is the data telling us? Because that's a component of what we need to do. And then the final piece, which is one of the most meaningful pieces, is really saying, okay, as a district, what do we need to build in terms of our professional learning plan for instructional purposes, for us as administrators in the district at the central office level, at the building level? What does that need to look like for our teachers throughout the summer? And also, forward moving into what do we need to plan throughout the school year, in addition to teacher feedback on that, with what we need to do to really impact and change and build ourselves structurally and really grow capacity and have ultimate impact on our students? Any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. I know that I would like to spend more time understanding this data, so I know you said you have, this presentation will be available to us, and there's another lengthier one, and we may need to consider what we need as a board to digest this information. But does anybody have any questions for tonight?
I think I just have general comments. I think it's, I think it's really great to see us moving in that right direction. I think it's good to see our growth and we're maintaining some of those areas. I think it's really impactful, I think, for folks sitting in the audience, it's the first time we're seeing the data, that we didn't have this a few years ago. And now having that data and watching these kind of trends and where we are and understanding a little bit more that it's not just one state data, it's not just one AIMS web, it's not just one NWA, it's not just PSAT data, it's all of those data sources combined together that we can really drive some of these decisions and really seeing some of these things in place, these systems in place to really differentiate, rate that curriculum, let our teachers have a voice in the process, letting our staff have a process, setting some of those goals. And I echo Laura's sentiments a hundred percent. We, as a board, need to figure out what data we can showcase better, because I think this gets a little high level and there's so many different pieces, and what does RIT really mean, and what does this triangle mean over here? And so, how do we communicate that out better so people in our community understand better that we really are doing a really great service for our children? And, and so thank you for being here and we're mulling through that. And thank you, everyone in the audience who, but that got a little dry, for sticking with us, just because it is, it is difficult. And I think, I think even up here, I'm like, I know what that means, but can you explain it again? So, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will move forward with public comment. Any of you wishing to speak, there are forms in the back for you to fill out. I have a couple here. And we'll go ahead and get started. Colin Houston.
Did he leave?
He's not here? Did he? Okay. Sandy Holly?
I'm glad to see that First Robotics is in our school system. I volunteered for First Robotics and got our high schools, our, our high schoolers involved in it back when my kids were going through Hazel Park. And it's a wonderful program. But for those of you that don't know me, my name is Sandy Holly. I have lived in Hazel Park for about forty years. I am a Hazel Park High School graduate myself. My husband and I helped raise seven children that graduated from Hazel Park High School, too. We are proud parents, but very sad with our current, current schools. We have three bright, beautiful, fun grandchildren that currently reside in Hazel Park, but their parents are choosing alternative education for them. Our administration does not want to listen. They want to blame one another and make excuses as why the real job is not getting accomplished. Three years ago, our son went against his better judgment and gave our schools a chance. This process was not easy because he was in a custody battle over our grandson and had to prove why Hazel Park Schools was a better fit. He was granted permission by the court, and my grandson started first grade at United Oaks. He had a great two years there, only to have his third grade be tainted by an overcrowded classroom with numerous behavioral issues. Safety concerns were brought forward to the principal. Here is a letter in detail describing why our grandson is seeking education outside of his home district. In short, thirty children in a classroom is a lot for one teacher. Then add on behavioral issues. Paraprofessionals are needed for the headbangers, the outbursts, the physical aggressors, but yet our superintendent took these jobs away. So now our one dedicated teacher is busy redirecting rather than teaching our students, are being given repeated busy work that they have already done and sit quietly at their desk, why the teacher focuses on one child. When a problem is brought to the attention of the principal, we are smiled at and made to feel it will be checked into and handled, when the reality is, there is no intent because she feels she has everything underway and she is doing a great job. Our grandson leaving could have been prevented with a little compassion and the admittance of being wrong. Your administration failed to protect our grandson, but yet went on smiling as there was no problem. He sat in a classroom for eight months, watching and learning inappropriate behaviors that could have been limited with paraprofessionals. Instead, it came down to a collision that seriously bruised my grandson's face and so hard that his glasses broke and cut the skin on the other side of his face. When brought to the principal as a safety problem and a reminder that this is exactly what we spoke about in the past, it became a blame game. This happened because of Hazel Park Schools not giving these special needs students what they need. Now, because I am a grandma that had full permission to advocate for my grandson, it is being said that Dr. Amy Crouppie put out that grandparents are no longer allowed to be spoken to regarding their grandchildren. I want to say that I am a grandparent. I will go to the Supreme Court level to advocate for my grandchild. I had permission to advocate for my grandchild through all of this. And my grandson left United Oaks with a size bruise on his face that was the size of a baseball. And I went to the principal months before this happened and begged for some more supervision in that classroom, and it was not given. So I do want to say thank you for listening. I'm liking all the positive that I'm hearing tonight that's happening, but I don't believe it's happening.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no one else wishing to speak, then we will move forward with our consent agenda. So I need a motion for consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
Support.
Rule call.
Nope?
Yes.
Enter.
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
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 Atkins?
Yes. All right. We will move on to, there's no unfinished business, we will move to new business, of which we have a full alphabet. Do you want to talk about those first? Okay. All right. So we're going to start with the two items that Mrs. Hempel requested that we pull off the consent so that they can be discussed. So, do we need a motion to talk about? Motion?
No. I think we don't.
Discussion.
Yeah, just discussion.
Move to discuss?
Yeah, let me just pull it up.
Move to discuss, remove consent agenda A1D. Is that correct, Mrs. Hempel?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
All right. So I was looking under our special meeting in the minutes. And the comments, the NE from me was, Ms. Hempel feels we need an HR manager because we need, we need an HR manager before we need a PR person. She suggested Dr. Crouppie keep handling it, giving the website to a teacher to do, or having a student keep it updated, tabled by Ms. Atkins. Well, I read that, the first line is totally correct. And then after that, if someone had pulled these minutes, they would be just as confused as I am because I think I told Dr. Crouppie that we could probably handle it in-house, we could advertise it to a teacher, like we do coaches, to see if a teacher may want to step up and do the website, or we could train students to do the websites as part of a class. So I guess I'm not really thrilled with my comment because it's really not my comment.
Would you like it to be amended, Mrs. Hempel?
Yeah, I would like something, because someone pulls the minutes, it just looks like I'm saying, give more to the teachers or just let a kid do it.
Or let the superintendent do it.
Yeah, or let the superintendent, which we made very clear that she does enough. Right now, she has her hands in everything that she doesn't need anymore.
Okay, so.
What would you like it to say?
It could say, like I said, I told Dr. Crouppie maybe to offer it to a teacher, to see if they wanted like a stifle, like we do for coaches, or maybe have a student with our new computer classes that they're offering at the high school that they have to take, maybe learn something on that, they can do the website for us.
Do we need a motion to accept that change? Or do we?
Well, how about you have those changed and brought back for next month?
Okay. All right. If you could update the minutes and bring it back.
And then my other one, that I wanted.
Do we need to do a motion to?
Do we have to?
Do a motion to discuss the other one, yeah?
We didn't do it with the first one?
Yeah. We're going to need the motion.
Motion to discuss number E on the consent agenda, Michigan Association of School Boards.
I support it.
Do we have a rule call?
No. We're in discussion right now.
Okay. So I don't know if anyone read this, the MASP for renewal, but if we look, and it kind of goes into the whole communication thing, at the very bottom, there's dues plus a video. They will do a five-minute video for us to advertise whatever we're doing into the schools at a fee per video. And I think that is something that we might want to look into. I don't know if we have to set it up in advance before you renew your dues, or if you can do it as you go.
I, I don't know, maybe I misunderstood it. I thought, I thought that was like a purchase, like to purchase a service. Yeah, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's per one, but it would be cheaper than hiring a person. To me, I think it's something to look at to maybe save the district money. Just saying.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting. I didn't think it was incorporated in the dues, but I thought it was.
No, it's not incorporated in dues.
No, but it's part of the dues, it's on that list.
They got the second line below it that shows that you can add as many videos as you'd like.
Yeah, it's on the sheet for the dues.
Per.
And the reason I'm bringing it up is I don't know if we need to do it in advance or if we can do it as you go.
Got it.
Well, it's cheaper in advance.
If you do it in advance, it's like, almost like a thousand dollars cheaper.
A thousand dollars. So it was something I think that maybe we, since we're wanting to advertise ourselves at a cheaper way.
Dr. Crouppie, for this video, is this something you'd like to pursue or you want to look into? Do you think it would benefit us?
Certainly, it's at the will of the board. I think any video is, I'm not sure what this includes, but I'm sure any video is helpful to the school district.
When do we have to give notice to get the prepay option? What is the pre, like, do we have to purchase it with our dues? I guess that's the question.
I think that's the prepay reduction.
Is to buy it with our dues?
Mm-hmm.
So if you purchase like three of them, you get them for the fifteen hundred instead of the twenty-five?
I guess the question is, when do we have to vote on this? Do we have to have this done today?
What do you mean? Your dues are, your dues are due.
If you purchase three videos.
I think it's what I said, your dues are due.
Dues are due.
Yeah. But the new fifth year starts July first.
It expired May eighth.
Well, it has a due date of May eighth, but it says the new year begins July first for the membership. Would you like to put that off till next month and we find more information and bring that back as well?
Because it seems like you're saying, I mean, we should prepay if we're going to do it. That's why I'm wondering if we just wait to.
Yeah, page one says it's due on June thirtieth.
So we can bring it back to the June eighteenth.
I want to make it very difficult to pay it that quick at a time.
Well, can you find out we have a workshop on?
Do you want to do business on your workshop?
You know what? I'd rather, if we're going to discuss media, this would go hand in hand with.
Okay. Would you like to bring it back then with an action item?
Oh, good lord, no.
Put that on the minutes.
I, I'm okay with that.
Would you like to bring it back with more information? I'll call them and bring it?
Yes, please.
I certainly can do that. Thank you.
Because then maybe we can also discuss about topics that maybe we want to look at to drafting our story, things that we want to advertise really well. I don't know. I mean, I guess maybe, maybe like, yeah, think that through as a district about things that are really cool that you know, that we do, like our Christmas little work program, AP classes, AP classes that we offer, things that we do above and beyond that districts don't do. Like we have promised them here.
Sounds great.
I don't know. Look forward to that maybe.
All right, thank you. All right. So now we can go on to, yeah, that was a good catch, the new business item A, which starts with the community coalition update.
Jared, stick around.
Mr. Jared, he goes all the way.
Coming from the room. He's a trooper.
You going to hang out with us the rest of the night, sir?
That's maybe. I'm still in distress after Game of Thrones last night. Okay, it's been a couple months, so just a couple updates for everyone. So thank you, good evening, hello, everyone. We, on April tenth, were able to host our first Destress for Success event. This was towards seniors going into a post-secondary education field, whether it be trade school, college, the army, whatever it may be. We want to reward them and say like, congratulations for graduating, this is a huge step for you. But we know that with transitioning, it comes with a lot of anxiety and stress. So we want to make sure we could destress all these students who are about to transition. So to do that, we were able to partner up with a college advisor, Matty Burns, and the Hazel Park High School, so Mr. Daly, thank you. And we were able to provide this wonderful event. It was about three hours long. The first hour had a panel of different people in post-secondary fields. It was like college advisor, recent grad, someone that was in trade school, whatever it may be. And they just spoke about their experiences and what it was like transitioning and stuff. I thought, I thought the students found that very educational, but they got to post their own questions that they may not be able to ask during like a rally or something like that. So it was really nice for them. Then we spent the last two hours doing like inflatables and food donations and coloring and yoga and all that wonderful stuff. We tried to bring puppies, but two of the puppies had heartworms, so they couldn't come. I know, it's really sad. The seniors were disappointed, but I'm just glad the puppies are getting better now. So thank you to everyone that helped out with that. Looking forward to bringing it next year, hopefully, and maybe catering towards the juniors and the seniors. The seniors were disappointed, but I'm just glad the puppies are getting better now. So, thank you to everyone that helped out with that. Looking forward to bringing it next year, hopefully, um, and maybe catering towards the juniors and the seniors that way, because I, the juniors are taking the SATs now, or the ACTs? I'm too old for SATs.
SATs.
I'm too old for this, I took ACTs. So, that would definitely help them, you know? That's a huge stress, so that's a great way to relieve stress is to help us out with that. Next, on April 11th, the following day, we had Angst the Documentary. This has been something that's been in the works. Uh, we didn't have this large turnout as I'd hoped for, but that's okay, you know? You have a couple that are great, a couple that is like, eh, so it's fine. So, great, um, um, big, huge thank you to Matt Daly again at the high school, really helped get this on the road. And then we had, um, about ten to twelve vendors show up from different organizations that really just passed out information and really talked about mental health and why anxiety is really a key focus, not just for our students, for community members. I think the documentary was very educational, it was very emotional. I think it really touched upon a lot of things that a lot of people actually don't know about anxiety. So, we are looking to hopefully bring it back again next year. So, again, thank you to everyone that helped bring that, um, to fruition. Next, on April 25th, we had a Narcan Training. For those of you who don't know, Narcan Training is just, um, training anyone that's really interested on opiates and how to prevent an opiate overdose. We do this in correlation because of the opiate crisis we're facing in America. Opiates are currently the number one cause of death amongst, I think it's like fourteen to like twenty-five-year-olds. It's a huge thing. It used to be drunk driving, but now it's opiates. So, it's definitely something that we want to make sure our citizens are aware of. Big thank you to the Hazel Park Police Department, Hazel Park Fire Department for coming and providing information and educational materials and stuff for us, and also to Tracy from the Lions for giving the presentation. So, we look forward to doing many more of those. We were able to partner with the high school and do a AAA Prom Promise. This basically is a campaign that AAA runs that basically says if students are drinking during prom night, even though we say do not do drugs or don't drink because that's bad and they're underage, but they do choose to do that. One way that we can help them get home safely and avoid any dangerous things is through calling their parents who will call AAA to come tow their car home for free. So, no student is getting in trouble behind the wheel or their friends are getting behind the wheel and causing a lot of havoc. A lot of students, um, didn't really know that much about it, so I was able to spend a couple of days in the high school and really educate them during lunch. Last year, I did it for the first time, we had about fifty signatures to this pledge. This year, I'm happy to report, we had about two hundred. So, very amazing thing. I, I don't think there was actually two hundred people that went to prom, but I think the students just really like saw like, oh, he's signing, I want to sign too. So, it's awareness, that's all that matters. And in addition to that, we were able to provide a small presentation in coordination with prom, uh, with the high school. I was able to talk about drunk driving and what it can do to you and how even if you are caught drinking at underage, you may think it's not that big of a deal, but it can have consequences like a DUI, which can affect, um, employment. It can affect scholarships and things like this. So, I wanted to make sure the students were very aware of those kind of things. So, very big month for us last month. Currently, we are expanding. We are going into our third year this year, and now we are hiring a youth project coordinator. So, hopefully, at the next meeting I have, we will be able to present them. This coordinator will be focused on school activity solely. They will be helping just build relations with the school and really plan events. Um, we've really only focused on the high school in the past, but we want to expand it to the junior high, maybe the elementary school, and just talk about like character development and mental health and why all these things are so important. As you know, I work for the city, so I'm not always in the schools, but having this person there, which is really like set in stone that we are always there for these students. We want to make sure they're getting the help that they need. So, we're looking very forward to getting this person hired. In addition to that, we were awarded a summer mini grant for six thousand dollars. Thank you to Stephanie Domich for writing the grant, shout out to you, and for Amy for helping us with this as well. This grant is what we're going to use to have a summer program. It's a couple of weeks long, it's through University of Michigan Ann Arbor. They help us provide this program. Last year, we did it, and we do like small, like character development things leading up to a larger project. In the past, students have built a library for the alternative school. They've done, um, a rock garden with inspirational messages on them. So, we're looking forward to seeing how this will go. If any of your students are interested, I, I think it's only for junior high school students, correct? Yes. So, if you have a junior high school student who is interested in board during the summer, get them interested. It's a couple of hours a day for a couple of weeks, um, and it's, it's really amazing. So, please reach out to me or to Stephanie Domich here at the admin building. We are looking forward to bringing this back for the third year in the road, so great stuff. And then finally, um, we are hosting our Family Fun Fridays event again this summer that will be in July. It is the July 12th, 19th, and 26th. This is in partnership with City Edge Church and Youth for Christ. As a coalition, we have to represent twelve sectors. That's businesses, youth, civic groups, churches, the whole shebang. So, this is one of our ways to reaching out to that sector that we may not always reach out to and provide something for students and community members who may be able to engage and like just get out of the house and have some fun and really meet new people. So, Family Fun Fridays is where we just have a good time, make some food, play some basketball, um, have some great activities for youth of all ages. It's just a really nice time to just enjoy yourself, meet your neighbors, and just have a good time. So, look for a flyer coming up for that, but I believe that's everything. If anyone has any questions, they can of course reach me at Jared, J-A-R-E-D dot Gajos, G-A-J-O-S, at hazelparkschools.org, schools with an S. Some people don't understand, I'm like, there's an S. And that was it, thank you.
Thank you so much, Governor.
All right, item B is Plant Moran periodic communication. Mr. Zernis is hustling to the podium, I appreciate that as we're moving along here.
So, this is just a form letter that, uh, Plant Moran is required, um, by governmental auditing standards to send to all board members. It's basically a pre- audit communication to, um, enlist your help in them planning their audits. So, if you have any concerns or, um, areas where you feel there's higher risk in terms of the financial stability of the district, um, they ask you to communicate back to them so that they can include that in their pre- audit planning and development of what they're going to test when they're onsite.
Should we send those, uh, to you, Mrs. Atkins, in your compile list?
I think you can contact Plant Moran directly on the letter, there is a phone number.
Usually, it's best to go through the, the president, board president, and give it to the board president, and she can send them to you then to the auditor.
Yeah, if anybody has any, anything that they want in regards to Plant Moran. Feel free, of course. Thank you. Uh, let's see, next item is our personnel recommendations. The, uh, personnel recommendations are broken up by, uh, by group to accommodate some of our school board conflicts. So, we will start with our HPEA group, which are our teachers. Uh, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for the HPEA.
Support. Any discussion?
Um, I, you'll notice in here that you'll start seeing some of our movement around for next year where teachers have requested, or there's just some shuffling, so there's a lot of movement there. But I do just want to, um, notice some of the retirements that you see tonight. We have many outstanding teachers that have just, um, put in years of service and dedication to Hazel Park, and, uh, we should, um, just want to continue to note that as we go throughout there this time of the year, just kudos to them, it is an amazing profession. We have to continue to encourage people to go into it. I know that, um, it's gone through some rough patches right now, but, you know, teachers and, and public schools, we will rise again, right? And, um, it is a great profession, and I encourage, uh, people to continue to go into it every single time I can get in front of a mic.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
The next item is HPPA, paraprofessional.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, HPPA recommendations as presented.
Ladies?
Have, Rosie's one of you has to?
Support.
They have support.
Any discussion?
Can't go without saying that there's some retirements in there too, and they certainly are not praised enough for the work that they do and not paid enough, and, uh, they work tirelessly for many, many hours and, uh, and may have been in rough, rough positions. So, kudos to our paraprofessionals.
Absolutely, I will echo that. Anytime you volunteer in a school, these, the paraprofessionals are critical to keeping things moving along, so we appreciate that, and we will miss some of these that are resigning, that are retiring and moving on after some long periods of time with us, so. All right, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained due to conflict.
No?
Abstained due familial conflict.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Next one, IUEOE secretaries, motion please?
I'll make a motion on, uh, recommendation for the secretaries.
Second. Discussion?
And we know that there's two things when we go to school that they tell us, and it's our custodians and maintenance and our secretary, so we couldn't do it without them, and we're losing a, um, mighty fabulous secretary in Dale. So, congratulations to Dale on her retirement. We begged her to stay and she, um, put it in anyway.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Unaffiliated employees, can I get a motion?
Wow, that's a lot of them.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations for the unaffiliated employees.
Support. Any discussion?
I just, I just want to point out that these are, uh, we're moving our, uh, substitutes that were, that we were brought on from eddest staff back out again. So, that's what you're seeing here. These aren't, uh, employees that were leaving us or anything along those lines. This is just a movement for paperwork trail. If you remember before, four years ago, you didn't have these kind of things. This, now you can really go back and track employees that came in and out. So, this is just movement so that you, we can see it and track it.
So, we're moved on to the new company for substitutes?
We had to hire them during, uh, when, uh, the, when they went out of business, and then we had to hire substitutes, so we had substitutes in place. So, we're now moving them off our books again.
Okay. So, I get real quick, has something to do with them. So, the name of them, is it EDU staff, or do we say it some other way?
Eddest staff.
Edju staff?
Eddest staff.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Schlock?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item D, which is the approval of the HPEA agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the HPEA agreement as presented, thanks to the board.
Support. Discussion?
So thankful to have this completed and appreciate everybody's... I'm sorry, Dr. Crouby, I'm taking your thunder, but you take...
You run the team.
Yeah, I, I know, and I didn't make it to every single one, but I know the dedication. I think I teased Mr. Voizin a little bit, and I said, wait, are we, are we at the right place that we're supposed to be negotiating? And, uh, I think everyone, their team, our team, I think it was a great collaboration and got some things really short away that needed to be shored up.
Want to say anything?
Did the teachers ratify?
No. So, we are, uh, voting ahead of the teachers. I believe the teachers will be voting soon, uh, in the next, uh, few days, Wednesday, and we'll know, uh, hopefully by Thursday or Friday. But we're voting ahead so that we can move on. If they ratify, then we'll be able to do some hiring. I have some applications that Dr. Kraus has on my desk waiting patiently, uh, for me to make some phone calls to. So, uh, we did ratify before last year as well, um, and so we're hoping for a positive outcome for everyone. It is a two-year agreement with a reopen, a wage reopener. And so, I just have to say once again, um, I think it's very collaborative and, um, we're very grateful to have a great group of teachers and a great board team as well, and I thank all of you for being there, that we're able to be there and, and for the teachers as well.
Yeah, the last week was a doozy.
We weren't leaving until it was done.
That's right.
And we didn't.
They were a great group.
All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Item E, approval of the administration agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the administration agreement.
Support. Discussion?
Yay.
So easy. Administration's always so easy and so wonderful to work with.
Well, again, I want to thank them as well, is, um, you know, they are the backbone supporting the team. We're really fortunate to have a wonderful team of administrators as well, and we couldn't do it without them. They are, they are top-notch too. So, thank you.
Yeah.
We worked them to death.
Yeah. I think we were not until twenty-five minutes. I think we set records in that one.
We do work them really hard. We're grateful for them, very much so.
All right, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Oh, did they ratify?
Kristy Atkins? Uh, just from the, from the personnel committee, I, I think that, as, as Christie alluded to with some of these, working on the, all these agreements and coming to the table, I think it just really speaks to, uh, Dr. Croupy and her administration and our continued efforts with, this is really a family thing and everyone always hands in, hands on deck, uh, when coming to negotiate and, and saying the things that they want to see and what we want to see, and I think it's, last year, the last few years have been so positive with coming to the table and everyone acting in this, understanding where we, where we have been, where we want to go, and, um, I, I can't wait to continue negotiating with the other unions and, um, and these two have been a pleasure so far, so, uh, just to keep up that positive thing. I know, we always don't get to share that with other board members, because we're all meeting all those meetings at the end of the year, so, um, it, it's, uh, it's good, and I think that that relationship is there, and if it wasn't there, then this would be a lot harder of a job, so.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F, approval of custodial staff. Can I get a motion?
Motion that we approve the additional custodial staff due to new school size? Is that what it is?
Yeah.[1455.34] Edison. Support. All right, discussion. I see approaching this podium, Mr. Vernis, would you like to say a few words?
Just getting ready. With the additions that we're putting on to Edison, talking with Greg and his staff, there was some need to add a full-time custodian at Edison, and we're doing that through moving some other custodians around to various buildings, Webster, Ford, UO, and Hoover being the buildings. And again, from our standpoint, you know, adding that one custodian will help us get the job done throughout the day and night at each of the buildings, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Of the, splitting the Webster person between Webster and Ford in the daytime, will there be an evening person? Or are they just going to have a halftime person, period?
I believe there is an evening person at both buildings. The reason we're splitting the individuals between Webster and Ford is, obviously, there's the least amount of students in each of those buildings. Webster students don't have a lunch, per se, so it makes it easier for that individual to cover both those buildings.
Yeah, I don't disagree. They eat over there with all those little guys in those classrooms.
Yeah, they do have a lunch.
They make a disastrous mess sometime. I used to do that. I just have to make sure that they're just not having a halftime person.
No.
So, thank you.
Again, this is more so for us to provide the adequate coverage within each of our buildings.
Thank you.
Is this a promotion for one of ours, or is it a new hire that you're planning on doing?
We're trying to figure out where that's going to fall out in the grand scheme of things, and we'll probably have to bring...
They have to bid into it, so they have to, we have to live within the guidelines of the contract. And so there'll be a new position, and then they'll be able to bid within those positions appropriately, within the contract.
In-house first.
In-house first.
Yep. So you will have one open spot then, right? After they start bidding, or no? Everybody will fill a spot?
Yes, that we will have one open spot after they bid appropriately. So we'll hire a new person.
Will we look at, is our substitutes considered in-house?
We don't have any subs at this point.
We don't have no subs in the district?
We hired them. The pay is such that...
No, I was just curious if we had our subs considered in-house when it comes to...
We hired ourselves.
All right, if there's no further discussion, let's go forward with a roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yep. Oh, abstained due to familial conflict. All right, item G, approval of additional .3 adapted PE teacher at Webb. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the additional .3 adapted PE teacher at Webb Elementary as presented.
Support.
Discussion?
How do you hire a third of the person?
I think that's why it's rounded up to a half. Does anyone else speak to this? Can we get a...
Which third of the person do we get?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry. Which third of the person do we get?
Which third?
How do you hire .3s? Is what you're saying. .3 of a person?
I think this was adding on to a .2, is that...
Yes, correct, correct, yep. So then, we get the legs, the torso of the...
You got it, you want to do it?
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Krupi, because I wasn't honestly prepared to talk about this one, so if Dr. Krupi wants to talk about it... Okay, well, I could do it, or Michelle could do it, or whatever, you can do it. The PE teacher in the room actually is the problem. Actually, Edison increased to a full-time. Edison was a .8. And because Edison was a .8 and we're increasing, Edison became a full-time. And so Ricardo used to go .2 over to Webb, and now that he's full-time over at Edison, that left us a .2. Well, there's no way that we're going to get a one-day, a .2 adapted PE over at Webb, and so we needed to increase it to a .5. All of this is center program funding in order to find someone to come in and fill adapted PE. So we're asking to do .5 so that we can actually find a person to come in and support our SXI students.
Okay.
Adapted PE, adapted physical education.
Okay.
And it actually is a specialized service. You know, in my previous life, it would have been just a couple of classes, and I got schooled by Dr. Kraus on the fact that it is a little bit more than that here in Michigan. So it's going to be very difficult for us to find that, more difficult than what we think. So we're going to have to go .5 in order to get it done.
All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Item H, women's suffrage resolution? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the women's suffrage resolution as presented.
Support.
Can I ask what this is?
It's the 100th year that women have the right to vote. Mr. Hempel?
I hope you're joking.
Hey, look!
Rossi kicking under the table.
I received an email asking us to, you know, help celebrate this 100th anniversary of when women earned the right to vote, and so I thought, let's go ahead and pass the resolution they're asking for to honor that. So, we have to vote first, and then I read it? Okay, all right, any other comments on it? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Yeah.
Atkins?
Yes. You know, you're sitting among a...
I know, I'm stuck in the... I'm glad you don't want me to read it.
Maybe they should have you read it.
All right. "Celebrating the 100th Anniversary of the Ratification of the 19th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution Giving Women the Right to Vote. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background across America have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the women of this nation initiated the most significant women's movement in history, the need for women's suffrage. And whereas despite the strong opposition, the inspiration and determination of women nationwide brought about the extraordinary accomplishment, the right for women to vote. And whereas on June 10, 1919, Michigan women cast their vote when Michigan voters ratified the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. And whereas the state of Michigan was the second state to ratify the 19th Amendment Giving Women the Right to Vote. And whereas on August 26, 1920, voters across the nation secured the right for women to vote when the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was ratified, empowering American women and declaring for the first time that they, like men, deserve all the rights and responsibilities of citizenship stating, the right of the citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. And whereas August 26, 2020, will mark the 100th anniversary of the passage of the National Suffrage Amendment, the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution guaranteeing women the right to vote. And now therefore be it resolved that the Hazel Park Board of Education remembers and celebrates the historic women who fought for the right to vote and recognizes the courage and inspiration of these bold women to change the course of history. Be it further resolved that the Hazel Park Board of Education will fly the 19th Amendment victory flag June 10, 2019 through June 14, 2019, to commemorate the state of Michigan ratifying the 19th Amendment. And August 24, 2020 through August 28, 2020, to commemorate the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States."
And see, the board secretary has to sign it.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Hempel.
It's a beautiful thing.
All right. Okay, we can move on to item I, approval of the paraprofessional positions. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion for approval of paraprofessional positions as presented.
Support.
All right, discussion.
How many parapros do we have right now?
So, in your packet, I did include it. You'll have to make it a little bigger if you so choose to do so. So currently, we write, so you might want to look at it a little later, because you'll have to make it a little bigger. We have 119 right now. We're asked, or 120 right now, we're requesting 119. The largest reduction is due to the reduction at Jardon. So there, the change, one of the changes that we're requesting is that at the high school, I'm requesting an increase in security, one extra security. I'm also requesting an additional office aide at Webster, so there'll be somebody to answer the phones and to answer the door. And so that, and there's also additional paraprofessionals that will be found at Edison.
So it's really not an increase, it's just...
An approval for the number of paraprofessionals next year.
They're just moving around.
They're moving around. So overall, it was 120?
We had 120, and it'll be at 119.
So we're dropping one next year. There is some shuffling and movement in the 20.
So I look back on when we entered this deficit, and we had 67 were mandated and 93 non-mandated. 58 were non-instructional, 35 were instructional. We've reduced by 90. So over time, we've brought back 120.
Well, some of those that you had, that you have in your numbers, might not have been the center program ones that you're talking about. So we, you, when you cut, those cuts were general ed ones that were in the buildings. And this numbers included the center program ones.
That was 90, that the...
So you don't even have 90 here? You only have 50 that are our center program ones.
So like, Webb is going to have 18.
Some of those are center program?
That's what I want, like, are they lunch people? Are they security people? Are they classroom people? Are they one-on-one people?
So in, there's a spreadsheet attached to this.
On that other, on that second sheet that's too tiny.
And it tells you exactly what they are. So at Webb, so for example, you have one behavior...
I enlarged it, went off the screen.
Sorry, you have one resource.
Okay, I'm good.
Three CI, and those are, and then SXI, you have four SXI, which are center. And then you have three lunch ones. Remember, we also removed all the bus ones, all the outdoor ones. Those aren't there anymore as well. You have one office one, you have two meal ones. So you can see right across there, we have a library one. We brought the library paras back in all the buildings. Remember, those were cut before.
So you're doing the shifting, and not really hiring, but is there going to be a pay increase with all of this?
We have not negotiated yet.
Oh, so whatever that would be, okay.
Thank you for putting the 18 by the new year on the topics that are tough.
Yeah, so it does take a little scrolling, but hopefully we'll be able to understand the breakdown there. And I guess by the column, you can then tell which ones might be center programs versus not.
Right, remember your MOchi, your SXI, and you always know that your Jardon at Advantage, or Jardon and Edison are center programs, and Webb, SXI is your center program.
All right.
If you have any questions, please feel free to call me.
Yeah, yeah, if after reviewing this you still have questions, let me know, and we can make sure we get those answered.
Yep.
All right, any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
We have to abstain, Chuck.
Oh, abstain.
Did you say me?
Yes.
Abstained due familial conflict.
Sorry, I was kidding.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Item J, extended school year at Jardon.
Motion to approve the 1920 extended school year at Jardon as presented.
Support.
All right. Would you like to speak to this, Ms.?
Now, this one I can talk about.
All right.
I believe in more things for letting you talk about ESY, it's Extended School Year for Students at Jardon. Extended school year are services that are provided to students with IEPs, Individual Education Plans, who meet one of three criteria. Those three criteria are regression recruitment, nature severity of disability, and then critical stages of learning. So all year long, data is collected on the IEP goals that each student is working on. We invite the home district, resident district to the IEP all year long, but specifically, we start talking about ESY kind of later fall and on, because a lot of data has to be collected. We are really looking at how they do over break. So Christmas break is about a two-week period, how they do. Do they retain skills, or do they lose skills when they return to the school? Spring break, winter break, those kinds of things. So I started talking to the six directors at that time, early in the fall, about ESY. If they were interested, if they wanted this for their students, that they send to Jardon, and they were all interested. And so we kind of started having those discussions, what that might look like, what that means for their students. And then the IEP teams gathered data all year long. I handed that over to Megan, our new principal at Jardon, and she has done a fantastic job working on this, securing ESY services, working with directors. But it also involves a parent. Do parents agree that their students need ESY services? And so right now, we have, we have, let me see here. We have 10, excuse me, 10 students who are qualifying for ESY services for the summer at Jardon. That's going to be July 8 through August 15. It's going to be Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to noon. They will eat lunch with their peers. We have right now proposing to you two ASD teachers, 16 hours a week, two paraprofessionals, 16 hours a week, two one-on-one paraprofessionals. Now, these one-on-one paraprofessionals are written into the IEPs of two of our students who need ESY services. One speech and language pathologist and one administrator. So Megan and I are going to try to share that over the summer. Who can ever come in will come in to provide that administrative capacity. Tuition, we're charging about $3,500 per student to the home district, so they will pay that tuition to send their student. They'll be busing their student to Jardon for the ESY summer program. Yes, ma'am?
So they bus, but if they need us to bus, that's where you're in here, that we would charge them? Do we have any idea what we would charge them to bus if they can't bus to us? Does that make sense? I just use bus way too many times.
Okay, so you're asking if they cannot bus to our program, are we providing bussing services?
Yes.
We are not.
No.
We are not. It's going to be contingent that they can transport their student to us, and they understand, they've all agreed to transport.
Okay, so this will be an additional cost to participating in school districts?
Yes.
If they wanted us to bus, we would charge them?
I think we... Well...
I'm just trying to understand that sentence.
There'd be no bussing.
No bussing.
We would not be providing transportation, no. It's 100% on the home district to provide, to get them to and from.
The additional cost for that other district, I think is what it's trying to say.
Got it, okay. This sentence got real confusing.
I see how it's confusing.
It's probably 9:00 o'clock at night.
It's okay, it's...
I read it, I read it yesterday, too, and I was like, I don't know what that means, so...
However, we, because they'll be going on CBI, so Community-Based Instruction, we will be providing the bussing with Hazel Park bussing, but not to and from their home district.
Got it, so they're responsible for that?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to make a five-minute motion for a five-minute recess, please.
That coffee must be kicking.
Do we have to support that?
Yeah.
Take a break, okay. All right, five minutes. I know one.
I know one.
Yeah, we got about two hours' worth.
Yes, and I love your optimism.
Midnight.
All right, no?
Check order to midnight.
We're not doing midnight. We are not looking to set records.
I was looking at night thirty.
We haven't had a demo of them a long time.
We haven't had a long one in a while, let's, I, I will say that, it's been a while, and, and this one just-
All right, motion to come back.
Okay, approved.
All right. Item, one thing was brought to my attention during the break, which is that we need to re, we need to amend our motion on the consent to make sure we were clear that it removed the two agendas that Mrs. Hempel asked to remove. So can you accept that amendment?
I, I made the motion, and I accept that amendment.
Our support. Okay, do we need to re-vote on it then? Roll call. We, we weren't clear when we motioned for the consent that it was minus the two items that we pulled out.
But we did minus them, because we put them on the other one.
We did, but, the idea was to make it clear with that motion, so.
So, we'll amend it to exclude those two items
Mm-hmm.
as they were removed at the beginning of the approval of the agenda.
Correct.
Got it, perfect.
All right, do we need to do roll call on that? Sure that we amended that?
Why don't we do a just-in-case?
Well, how do we do roll call?
No?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right.
All right, item K, overnight dance team requests, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion, we accept their request.
Support.
All right, these are the same traveling items that they've done the last few years?
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Slott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yep.
No?
Yep.
Mr. Hempel?
Oh, yes.
Hammond?
Okay, it says dance team, then it says soccer team.
You're on.
Two, okay.
That's an item else.
It's late.
Dance first.
It's getting later.
Yes or no, Mrs. Hammond?
Yes.
Yes. Atkins.
Yes. Item 11 is the overnight soccer team requests, can we motion, please?
Make a motion for the overnight soccer team request.
Support.
All right, this is their annual OSCODA tournament they go to, they've gone to for a few years. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yep.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. MM. Approval of the Yes DU Summer Program, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the Yes DU Summer Program. Support.
All right, I see Mrs. Stoneage here for a quick overview.
So, I know these are the awards that Jared that we received. Of the mini-grant, one of the things that Jared didn't say, but he shared with me, is that they really love funding this program, because there's so much impact to it. And I actually believe he said we were one of the few that have gotten the grant for the past three years. So this is a really positive opportunity for our junior high students. And if you recall, just go quickly, I promise it won't be as long as the dated conversation. That basically, we try to get about 36th and 7th graders. Usually, we try to focus on 6th graders, because the point is to build their empowerment and their, you know, opportunities for them to be strong and learn important ways to work together as a team, and build their self-confidence. In addition to, we do address some of those, those critical pieces around substance abuse. So there's a combination of those pieces, and they always conclude with that impact on the school community, which is what Jared shared about some of the different events we do. Putting the rock garden up, you know, painting the, one year they painted the entrance, you know, some positive things to really build community in their schools. One of the things that I did want to share also is that I have done the report for the past couple of years after the grant, and it's been really positive, because every year that we've done this, we've gotten positive feedback from our students. And if you think about it, you know, that's not like some, you know, amazing sporting kind of event, or something like that. This is about kind of digging in, understanding who they are as a person, and really doing something positive, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback from our students. One of the things that I wanted to address was the financial piece of it. I know that Jared did talk about the $6,000 worth from the grant. The remaining portion of that will be supported by the Hazel Park Coalition. So the entire portion of that is covered. And I did want to acknowledge and call out the support that we've continued to receive from Dr. Sarah Stoddard at University of Michigan. She once again is going to provide in-kind services in terms of training our teachers and providing some materials, and that really is because she strongly believes in the program. So I am seeking the approval of the board, so we can move forward and call the junior high tomorrow and get some of those kids involved in that process. Oh, by the way, actually, don't call myself or Jared. You know, really, the selection of the students is really going to be supported by, oh, Mrs. Schultz is gone, by Mrs. Schultz and her team at the junior high.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, roll call.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
My pleasure.
Slott?
Yes.
No?
Yep.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Item N, sinking fund project, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll support the motion.
For sinking fund project.
Mr. Zernus?
Um, it's discussed in the earlier committees on finance and building grounds. We are going ahead with, at your recommenda, or my recommendation to the board to replace two sets of bathrooms in the high school, an electrical panel at the high school, and the window flashing at UO. And in addition to the timeout room at the junior high. The total cost for all these projects is estimated at $463,000, with architectural fees for design and construction and administration totaling $45,150.
What is window flashing?
The, the issue. I was going to let the experts speak to this.
It's the metal at the ceiling and the bottom of the windows. Somehow, the original architect or the installa, installation of the windows was not properly installed. So what we have to do is we have to take it out, because the water is flowing into the school, not out of the school. So what we, they have to do is they got to take all the windows out, brace it up, and then allow the water to go out of the windows. So, that's going to be a big project for the United Oaks. Thank goodness they don't have to do the gymnasium ones.
Thank you for the clarification. I, I know, I'm super excited to see the new bathrooms at the high school. My kids are like, "Which ones are they?", and it's, it's good, because that's-
Keep them in suspense.
Keep them in suspense.
Are these playing into that, that study we had back a while ago with some of the, the like priority projects?
Yes.
Is that playing into that?
Some, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, any other comments from the board? Roll call.
No.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item O, boiler repair.
Make a motion to replace the boiler at the junior high.
Support.
So, this is kind of a conditional approval that we're requesting. Currently, we're, we've submitted a claim with our insurance carrier for this. There was the incident at the junior high where we had that freeze in the pipe burst. We believe also caused the freeze of the, of the coils within the boiler, and they've expanded and cracked. So we've requested SETSEG cover this as well in, in the original claim. So, if SETSEG denies our claim, we're looking for the board approval to then replace the boiler. This is a summer boiler, so it, it produces the hot water in the summertime. It's a smaller boiler, as opposed to the larger one for the heating. So again, it's just a conditional approval. If SETSEG claim does not come through, we'd like the board then to approve us to be able to go and replace that boiler, so we can get it installed and up and running over the summer.
All right, there's no questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next, I have approval of the ESL handbook.
It's an informational-
Informationals item, and we have Mrs. Stoneage here.
Moving quick.
Speaking to the handbook.
Yeah, so hopefully, you've had an opportunity to kind of look through and, and give a quick scan. This is really some minor updates to the handbook, really. The updates were targeted around making sure that the language in there was in compliance with the new ESA federal legal guidelines and laws. And so basically, there were updates to definitions, like for example, on the very first, actually, most of the updates were in the first two to three pages. One was on the legal definition of a student that's EL, just updating that according to that language. There was also some updates to in line, just legal responsibilities. It's really not changed from what we were doing, but just in line with what the federal guidelines of SSA. And then, there was another big major update to the different types of academic monitoring and pieces of information that we need to collect, so we make sure that we're really strongly monitoring our students receiving EL support services, and continuing to monitor them through their years with us, to make sure that they are meeting their, their targets, and also, you know, growing and achieving in terms of their, their literacy skills. And then, there were some minor changes to some of the definition and language throughout the book. So really, it's just mostly minor updates. This is a time that I want to take to talk about our new EL teacher. We have a new EL teacher that the board approved a couple of months ago. I just want to say that she's been a great addition to our team. And Ms. Kathy Raze and Ms. Melissa McDonald are doing a great job bringing some things together. You know, we only had our one EL teacher, which really, you know, Ms. Raze did a great job, but really needed that support. So moving forward, we are excited to continue to build our program, bring it back to what it needs to be, and move forward on hiring some of the professionals that we, we truly need to support our students. Any questions?
The only thing I had, just to comment, when we, when we're looking at handbook edits, it'd have been really nice to have the short little synopsis of the things that changed in there, just for us to reference back to, that would make it a little easier versus reading this, I don't know, 80-page document all over again. Just if there were little minor changes like that, we maybe have those next time.
Absolutely, and if I, I can actually upload that, because I actually do have a document where all the changes are in red.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Q, research collaborative resolution.
Motion to approve the research collaborative resolution is presented.
Support.
Discussion.
Yeah, so it's been asked that we do another resolution for the research collaborative, and that this is sent off to the research collaborative as a final support. The research collaborative will be coming to a close here, and they'll be looking at what their next steps are. And so they're asking all the districts to do one final resolution as a support in also supporting Governor Whitner's, Whitner's budget.
All right, any other comments, we'll just go to roll call.
No?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Yes, now I will read the resolution.
Good luck.
Two in one night. Resolution, support of adequately funding Michigan schools. Whereas, the Michigan Constitution states legislature shall maintain and support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools as defined by law. And whereas, the governor's 21st Century Education Commission states the urgency could not be greater regarding our failing K-12 performance, given that Michiganders underperform their peers, ranking 41st on 4th grade reading performance nationally. And whereas, the way we fund Michigan's public schools is fundamentally broken, and whereas, we must reexamine our approach and develop an equitable funding formula model that ensures all students, regardless of their circumstances, can achieve and succeed. And whereas, the schools' finance research collaborative is a broad-based, diverse, and bipartisan group of community, business, and education leaders from Metro Detroit to the UP, who agree it's time to change how our schools are funded to cover the true cost of educating students. And whereas, the school finance research collaborative adequacy study provides lawmakers and the public with the best, most accurate, and reliable information on what it truly costs to educate all Michigan students. And whereas, the SFRC report and other research clearly demonstrate the need to increase funding for our schools and target education funding more effectively. Therefore, be resolved, the Hazel Park School District calls upon the Michigan Legislature to fulfill its commitment to maintain and support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools with the resources recommended in the school finance research collaborative report to enable each child to achieve proficiency on Michigan standards. And be it further resolved, that Michigan's school funding formula should reflect the true cost of providing education that meets the individual needs of each child with a weighed formula for students in poverty, special education, and English language learners, giving all an equal opportunity to meet the performance standards set by the state of Michigan and the state of, state Board of Education. All right. Here it is. Uh, moving on to item R. This is an information item. We had three applicants. We need to fill the Michigan Virtual Charter Academy Board Member vacancy. We put out an app, a notice, a form, to apply, and we have three applications. So we just need to decide next steps. So, we could go through with interviews.
I'd like to point out that one of those members from our conversation, it doesn't live in district, and I guess that's one of the qualifications that they have to live in district. So ours is down to two, and I'd be fine with interviewing them and bringing them in to do that. I'm, I'm okay with that, I don't know how the other four members feel.
I'm with you, Rachel. Okay. All right, so I think we'll proceed then with, with an interview, and then hopefully, come to a decision and be able to vote at, at our next June meeting.
Would we like to do, kick that up to Personnel Committee, or do we want to do that as a board as a whole? That was my question. Board as a whole?
I think board as a whole.
Okay.
So you would, would you like Jamie and I to come up with a, throw some dates out there for you guys to come up with an additional board meeting?
Put them at our workshop.
Everything on that workshop!
Hey, this is the first time we get to make it.
Would you like that to be a decision at that workshop, or would you like that to be at the June board meeting for a decision?
So, interviews on the workshop date?
Interview on workshop.
And for discussion.
And for some discussion, then.
For a decision at the June meeting.
Yeah, I like that.
I think so.
Thank you, thank you for that guidance.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, approval of chair replacement, motion, please.
Finally get new chairs.
Motion to approve the approval of chair replacements.
We don't get them?
That's support.
I think they are for our-
Well, yours are, yours are probably going to come at another meeting. Right now, we're, we're dealing with all the secretarial administrative principals, assistant principal chairs.
They are more important.
Most of, most of what we have is donated from various local organizations. And what we, what we're requesting is, is for us to go through and replace everybody's office chair.
And Staples was the cheapest?
Staples was the cheapest with, they're going to come in, they're going to, they're going to put the chairs together. And from our standpoint, if we do have any warranty issues, you know, we've got a longstanding relationship with Staples. Integrity Solutions is a vendor that cold called us, I believe, and we invited them in to talk to them, and their pricing is very competitive. But again, it's for something like this, we'd like to stay with somebody we know. And they are, they are relatively, they're 200, $180 cheaper, so.
Yeah.
So were there complaints about chairs?
Yes, it started four years ago, when we first came, and there was concerns from secretaries about not being comfortable, and they're really, these aren't the appropriate chairs for working, for appropriate sitting. And so we talked about it four years ago and never got around to it. I mean, when you're working in a chair all day long and you're appropriately sitting, it's not healthy. And it's just the first time we've gotten to do it, because we felt like we could.
That's my concern.
We, we had-
Deficit-wise, $15,000. We had a, one time, we had a $10 million rainy day fund, and we got a, a new leader, and they bought furniture at the board office, and they put grass in, and they put bushes in. And that person was let go like after a year, because he was spending all the rainy day money. I'm very uncomfortable, $15,000 when we're in deficit, and we haven't had our budget until next month. I, that's just my, my opinion. I don't think it's a priority, and, and anytime something gets voted on, discussed against, then it's like, oh, the board's down on us. We're not down on anybody, I'm looking out for the money in the district and the children, and should it be spent in the classroom?
How soon will the audit, when will the budget be done?
The budget's set to be done in June.
As can we-
But that's just a, that's just, you know, an estimate, given the information you have now.
Jason, in, in your note here, it says the equipment budget is under budget by $29,000.
Right, so we're, we're using, we're using additional, our funds that have already been allotted this year for expenditure. So, we had a, a budget of X, this is, this budget line item is $29,000 below budget. So either we, we could elect not to spend this and carry that over to next year, or we can use up that budget line.
So by saying, you're saying that we had already approved this line item, when we approved the budget?
We had already-
Last time to spend on things in this nature?
We had already approved a dollar amount to spend towards general equipment.
And, and these are line items, right? This is not something we have to bring to the board, but it's something we do bring to the board for this purpose. Because what we don't want to have happen is that we purchase it, and then later on, you guys go, why'd you buy $15,000 worth of chairs? So, we bring it here for this exact conversation, so that these items, even though this is well, you know, below the spending of the ability of the business office, so that we don't get caught later on with a conversation just like that, where you say, wait a minute, why'd you spend $15,000 on chairs? So that this board, in my experience, wants to be part of those conversations. But this is a four-year conversation, and we, and we brought it to the Finance Committee for that purpose. The buildings are ground. One of the other.
Oh, I can't remember which.
Yeah, I think that, seeing that it is within the budget that was originally adopted, that actually, you know, delaying it would actually push it to the next fiscal year. So if we have the funds this year, and I know that we have a lot of needs, I think the idea here was to, to address something that had been talked about for years. Even though it does seem like a lot of money for chairs, I, I know that, yeah, sitting in a chair all day long, that if you're in a, if anyone that really isn't supporting you, you know, that can lead to other, other issues, especially as we get older, so.
I don't know what you're talking about.
What else, yeah. All right, anybody else have any other comments? All right.
I do, real quick. So, these chairs that you picked, real quick, they're the mesh-plastic backing fabric?
Mesh back with a back support. You know, the arms go up and down, it's multi-level, tilt back and forth.
Well, I'm just saying, the, the ones that have the arch or the-
Lombard?
Yeah.
Lombard, yeah, yeah, back support.
We may have like China.
We, we did, we did bring in three different demos into the district. Staples provided them with us, we transferred them to different administrators and secretaries within the building.
Spend the day with them?
Yeah. And then, you know, we did notice that several chairs were always gravitating back to the same people, so. I mean, there, there, there was a lot of goodwill in, in terms of-
You didn't bring any to the board meeting.
Right, I don't see any for us to try, but.
Was that the sinking future?
What?
The sinking chairs, we do, we have the sinking chairs.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and, and roll call.
No?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll be the mean one, no.
You're not the mean one.
Atkins?
Yes.
Should have joined.
I won.
All right, item T, approval of the L4029, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve the L4029 is presented.
What is it?
So, the, the L4029 is our actual, annual millage adoption. So again, with our voting last August, I believe, for the additional mills, we are subject to the headly rollback on the 18 and the 6 operating mills. We are also requesting 15 mills for debt, and three mills for sinking fund, which was rolled back by the headly rollback. So we're going to be levying 2.9463, which is going to generate $976,000 in the sinking fund for us to use for district improvements.
So, all of us have an action?
It is.
Yeah.
I made the motion, Rosie supported it.
Any, any other discussion from the board on this? All right, thank you, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slott?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right. Next item is Food Service Contract. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the food services contract as presented.
Or, any discussion?
So again, we're going to approve Chartwells for an additional year within their contract. MDE has already reviewed the contract documents and has approved it with the allowable CPI increases. We've met with Chartwells and reviewed their budgets. So at this point in time, we're hoping the board will approve their contract.
Any comments from the board? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Scott?
Staying due to familial conflict.
Hinton?
I didn't mean to say that.
Yes. All right. Approval of Counselor Days.
Motion to approve the additional counselor days as presented.
I didn't even get. It's the same request we have every year. This year, we have two counselors. Usually, we have a transition specialist, and we're just requesting five days in spring, five days in the fall. Our counselors have transitioned to the high school, brand-new ones this year have done a wonderful job, but in that, we need a little extra support for them to get everything done, and so we're asking for 10 days.
Well, you read the memo. It's to do schedules and all that, so.
They are incredible.
All right. Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
W, Approval of Non-Union Salaries.
Motion to approve the non-union salaries as presented.
Support.
So this first is our document that helps set our salaries for our non-union employees throughout the year as well as their benefits. Shirley and I use this throughout the year to help guide us along the way as we're looking at salaries and benefits, and so we're asking for your approval.
Any comments? Roll call.
No?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Item X, Approval of Non-Union Salary Increases.
Motion to approve the non-union salary increases as presented. Support.
So this is the approval of the actual increases to all the non-union employees in the school district. With this, we just remain with paraprofessionals, maintenance and custodial, and secretaries, which we'll be scheduling shortly.
Okay.
You got you in there as a non-union employee.
She's contracted through the district.
Wouldn't that be separate?
Still contracted, non-union.
Right.
She wouldn't be non-union. The non-union follows the union contracts.
She's non-union.
Non-union.
Isn't that what you're saying, like?
This is all non-union. This is all no contracts. This is all administrators, GSRP, Advantage.
Because they probably wonder you, you have a separate contract. Okay. Whatever. We'll go with it.
All right. Roll call.
Thank you.
No?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right. Next item is Approval of a Non-School District Trip.
Object?
To Spain and France.
I make a motion to approve the request for the, what was it? I missed it. Request for a trip to Spain and Portugal.
Barcelona.
Portugal.
Barcelona.
Close enough.
One of those places over there.
France.
Support.
Okay. Discussion.
So you have on your table a folder from two of our amazing teachers who are willing to take our students in June of 2021 again on an educational trip. This will be done with an outside organization next month, and so we're looking for your approval to support this trip.
Any cheffrons?
Yeah, where can I go? That is done through that organization, and you will have to have that conversation with them, not with me.
What kind of liability?
It could be a board meeting, conference.
What kind of liability does this to the district if we approve something through a third-party company?
That's done with the third-party company.
So why do we have to approve this? Just because it's in our policy and procedure?
Yes. We don't technically have to, but we've been requested by the two individuals since they're teachers that it makes them feel comfortable, and so we said we would do that.
So there's no liability to the district if something, God help us, happens on this trip?
It's, it's.
We look at our attorney, but this is done by an outside educational.
I'm sorry.
This is an outside educational company taking kids on a trip.
So they have their own insurance, their own liability, everything like that that would cover them?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item Z, which I'm not sure if we've gotten a Z in my time on the board, but Item Z is the FOIA, informational FOIA request. This is just related to transportation contracts. I don't know that we need to go any further than that.
Sit down, Jason.
The next one's just the current enrollment numbers.
And we will, we'll start updating enrollment. So letters have gone out. So we, next month, we'll start changing to our 1920s, so you'll start seeing some enrollment things fly in, right? So your numbers are going to go, are going to drop.
I want to know whether the packet that I got home was used by the new folder.
It was. Was it open?
What?
Was it open?
No.
The packet you got? Oh, okay.
That's good.
All right. I did have some people share with me.
Make it easier to send all these, all these folders. Remember we talked about those?
So I did, I did hear that some of them came, some of them got actually sealed properly. So, okay. Let's go into the next.
Sorry, no, I'm listening. I'm sorry. I have to.
No. Could I bring the president back in?
I was really excited to hear that the folder got used, because I got it, and I'm going to re-enroll.
Dr. Poopie, next time, can you bring the folder for demonstration?
We could have a workshop.
Bring it to the workshop. The post-it machine, the folder, the new fax service.
Let's move along, ladies.
All right. Internal Account Review.
We got to enroll and update.
So we're done with that, apparently.
A complaint was lodged in relation to improprieties or alleged improprieties with the spending of some of our internal accounts. So the board had asked the business office to review some of that information and see what was going on. To distance ourselves from the investigation, being administrators, we have a grant from the Department of Treasury right now for an outside party to come in and help us do some stuff internally. We asked that gentleman, Casey Zaski, to provide his services, being a previous administrator, business official. So we tasked him with looking at the transactions, knowing nothing of the district. He reviewed a number of transactions within the internal accounts in question and found no improprieties and found that everything was properly supported and aligned, the expenses aligned with the purpose of the internal account. So just nothing to report in terms of the complaint lodged.
What were those accounts?
They were the Wilford Web, the Board of Directors, and Community Engagement or After-School Activity Accounts.
So.
Those were the accounts that were directed in the complaint to the state.
Holiday Baskets not part of that anymore?
That's not a activity account?
No. No.
I'm not. Holiday Baskets.
Holiday Baskets was not one listed in that conversation.
It was, it is an internal account, but not part of these.
It's a fiduciary account.
A what?
Okay.
So I'm sorry. So do we have an after-school account?
Yes.
And it's an after-school account?
It's called the Wilford Web account.
Okay. So I think that when we talk about after-school, we need to tie that name into it, because previously in the consent agenda, one of the PTA, somebody gave money for the after-school.
That was, yes, to the Wilford Web account.
And it said after-school fund or whatever, but I think we need to, just so people don't think there's an after-school fund, that we need to clarify that it's the Wilford Web Fund.
Yeah, the Wilford Web Fund was established for after-school activities.
Because when we started doing this, I thought we had a separate fund myself, so I could see where someone would get confused as to.
Yep. Good point.
That was it.
All right. Any other conversations from the board on the internal account review?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I do see that we had a second spot for public comment here.
Really?
Oh.
Is it because we got so many items on the agenda?
There was a DB, yours.
All right. And then we're going to.
Oh.
If there's no one wishing to speak at public comment, we're going to move on to board administration.
I would like this.
We're going to.
I understand, it's raised complaints against an employee. The person has asked for a closed hearing, so we go in a closed session to hear the public, to hear that comment, as well as we can move later into the attorney-client privilege letter.
Okay. So, yeah, we are planning to listen to a complaint against employee in closed session?
Correct.
Okay.
They still would like to speak. It's unrelated to that.
Okay. As long as it's not about an employee?
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Ian Lloyd. I wanted to, as we approach our holiday here, I just wanted to reach out to us as a veteran and just to say I'm very grateful to be here as an active participant in my own community, returning as an active-duty veteran. And I just have a little slight prayer for the board, that we have these matters before us, and I just would like to acknowledge that, you know, the gravity of all the things that we do, but during this time, as we approach Memorial Day, I just wanted to say I'm very proud to be back here in my own community, seeing it thriving, and I just, I look forward to learning more about you guys. May the grace of Jesus, please bless this board as we deliberate on some very, very important matters. Thank you very much. Amen.
Anyone else wishing to speak for public comment? All right, we will move on to, we're going to do our board member comments before we go to closed session, so that we won't hold the public, those of you that have hung in all the way to the end. So why don't we just do our board member and administration comments, and then we'll do a motion for closed session, so.
I just want to say thank you for all the presentations this evening. I look forward to graduation season coming up soon, and thanks for hanging out with us tonight.
Pardon?
All right. It was short and sweet. Like Mr. Lloyd said, Memorial Day is coming, so I would like to thank all the veterans for their service. You know, we wouldn't have what we have if it wasn't for them. Sandy Holly got up to speak. I'm really saddened that she has removed her grandson from our district because she is a lifelong resident. Her parents were very active in the schools when they were alive. Her and her husband, since my kids were little, they've been active. So it really saddens me that she feels very dis, I don't know what the word would be. Reading her statement here, you know, I think I want to hear more conversation because, you know, the kid wasn't allowed into the school, and that was invited according to this, you know. I just think it's something that we need to look at, because that is a child, and, you know, they need closure too, and that's what we're all about, safe in the schools. Other than that, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for sticking around. I think it's been a while since we've had a long meeting. So, thank you for the PTA, for supplying the appetizers and desserts for tonight, for celebrating our longtime staff and retirees. I think it was a beautiful event, and I think it's always amazing to showcase our amazing staff and their dedication to our district, so at any point in time that we can do that is wonderful. Yeah, Memorial Weekend is coming up, so I encourage everyone to be safe and responsible as the festivities come through on this busy holiday weekend. So hopefully, everyone will heed that, and attend all of the graduation events that are going on this next month. There's a lot going on as we close out another year here in Hazel Park, and so I encourage everyone to attend as many as you can. They are wonderful. And I always like to say thank you, I can't say it enough, thank you to our staff, administration, custodians, secretaries, everybody. We know how hard you are working, and you are appreciated, so thank you for everything that you do for our students. Again, thank you for all the presentations, and just remember to just be kind to everybody you meet. So thank you for tonight.
Dr. Poopie?
So first of all, I want to congratulate all the teachers with great many years of experience who work hard every day upholding the policies and procedures of the school and the fabulous retirees. Also, Girls on the Run this weekend was absolutely fantastic. We really appreciate those who have dedicated their time. It was great to see the thousands of girls out there running this weekend, and really excited to say they're looking to open a program at the junior high next year, so really excited to say they're looking to open a program at the junior high next year, so really excited to be a part of that, and I hope to be out there running with the girls again. And it was great to be down with the kids at the robotics competition as well, and seeing them compete and seeing how excited they were to be competing out there as well. So great collaboration. And I hope that people consider being out there at the Community Build from June 10 through the 15th. There's many ways that you can participate. You can volunteer the 10th through the 15th, or we are also facilitating childcare, so we're looking for people to help facilitate taking care of children on those days. And I'd also like to say that oftentimes, people are up here making comments, and I have to say that we don't always agree on everything that's said, but as a leader of the district, I have to politely disagree with the conversation that was made today, politely and professionally, and say that we need to keep our focus on the kids, but I have to support my principals on the decisions that they make for children and the decisions that are made in the classroom every single day.
Ms. Hammond?
I just want to say that we have, the high school has a jazz band with some very, very talented kids.
I missed that one. That's good to hear. All right, Mr. Hempel?
It's been a delightful evening. Everything's going so well.